I'd like to call the city council meeting of August 20th, 2019. May we have a roll call?
Councilmember Henry?
Here.
Councilmember Edith?
Here.
Vice Mayor Eisen?
Here.
Mayor Robert?
Here.
Governor Corrigan?
Thank you. Pledge allegiance. We've got to pass it back and forth during the meeting. This is our new fancy system. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. The first item on our agenda tonight is public forum. I have one, two, three comments. The first comment is from Sean McFetridge, followed by Ray Olson.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for letting me speak here in public forum. My name is Sean McFetridge. I'm the new superintendent of Cabrillo Unified School District. I feel honored to be in your community and I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I just wanted to come by at the beginning of the agenda. I understand you will be reviewing requests of consideration for money and I thank you for your consideration for the funding for Cabrillo Unified School District and the work we do with the Big Lift Literacy Program. So, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray Olson, followed by Giovanni Edgar.
Good evening, members of the city council, and congrats on our last Beechwood Settlement Payment. It's great to have that behind us. My name is Ray Olson. I am a homeowner and live on Correa Street in Half Moon Bay. I've lived on the coast for over 25 years and lived in Half Moon Bay for over 15 years and I've raised a family here on the coast. I'm here to raise an issue the residents of the Half Moon Bay have seen increasing in the last several years and we need the council to take action to solve this issue. The issue is the increase in the amount of single-family homes turning into short-term rentals using sites such as VRBO and Airbnb to manage their hotel business. There are several dozen single-family homes in Half Moon Bay that are now available to be rented for a weekend overnight using these sites. There are two short-term rentals that are on my street and one that is now next door to me. There has been considerable amount of problems with the hotel unit on Correa's. This is the house that sleeps 14 people in one night. There has been disregard for the property of the neighbors, noise pollution, excessive cars, but the main problem is around the safety of our families and our community. We now have strangers staying in homes within our community, a community that has always been family-based and with close connections to each other. Because of the safety concern, for example, I can no longer allow my fifth-grade daughter to walk alone the two blocks it takes to get to Hatch. Since on any given day there could be a set of strangers staying in these short-term rentals, I now have to drive two blocks to drop her off at school so I feel safe that she's not abducted. We are also seeing that this problem is increasing and so many of us homeowners feel that there will be even more intruder presence in our housing tract and so something needs to be done to stop this practice. I don't believe any homeowner in Half Moon Bay thought that when they purchased their home, they would be living next door to a hotel. So, I did a little bit of fact-finding. There are about 17 facilities on the coast excluding the Ritz that offer rooms available for tourists that want to spend the night. These facilities support almost 600 rooms that are available on any given day. So, this is where we should be directing the tourists to stay, a facility dedicated for short-term stay hotel, not our single-family homes that are situated right in the middle of our Half Moon Bay residents. So, what we need the city council to do is engage in the process of making changes to our municipal code to curtail this new hotel business that is penetrating our community. All of us agree that we need to ban single-family homes from being turned into a short-term rental. This would be a home, this would be for a home that is not the primary residence of the homeowner. A ban similar to what was enacted in Manhattan Beach would work great for Half Moon Bay. Similar bans have just been enacted in both South Lake Tahoe and Pacific Grove as well and there needs to be penalties placed on the homeowner for any days out of compliance. Half Moon Bay could use the firm Host Compliance to help enforce this ban on behalf of the city. We need the city council to start the process now. We cannot wait any longer. I have several people that are willing to do whatever it takes to move forward on this. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ray. I've seen the plans for future city council meetings and short-term rental ordinance is definitely on there, so we will be working on it, rest assured. Giovanni Edgar, followed by Eric Hollister.
Hello, good evenings. I just want to say thank you for all the work that you did for us and that's all. Oh, okay. Hello, good evening. I just want to say thank you for all the things that you did for us and that's all. I just want to thank you guys for doing everything for all us and giving us opportunities to do more things.
City council, I'd like to take this moment to thank Sal Lopez for a few things. I know he's going to come up later and mention a few things about what he's going to do at the pumpkin festival. But, one thing I didn't get a chance to say because I didn't make the last city council meeting is that we had less fireworks this year, larger explosions in total than we did last year. And I think the mayor and I will both agree that there were several loud ones, mortars close to our house. But, when I called the sheriff's department, I got response within three minutes. As busy as they were, especially on the coast, I got response, so I want to thank him for that. I'd also like to thank him for what he's doing on Kelly Street. The direct action of not only putting in a speed sign towards the end near the previous Los Nino School and making it clear to anybody going down there that you're going to get a parking ticket or you can't stop and turn around and cause traffic at the end near the state park. But, the biggest part was putting a motorcycle deputy at the corner of All Saints and Rain and Kelly because as most people in that area will know, the stop sign there is heavily ignored. And although there hasn't been a lot of effort to put in crosswalk there because there are a lot of families that cross there, including maybe even councilman Eisen here, but I can't tell you how much it made me feel safer and happier that every single time that siren went off, Half Moon Bay made money and we were just that much more safe than we were without that car blowing that stop sign. And finally, a suggestion I'd like to make to our coastside hero here in Sal Lopez is that I don't think that for the Half Moon Bay Pumpkin Festival, and I think there's been a few people online that share this feeling, I don't think we necessarily need heavy artillery. I think those kind of weapons need to be in places that the public doesn't necessarily need to see, causes angst. But, I do think that at least doubling the police presence makes a lot of people feel a lot safer. We don't have fences to keep people in or for that matter, out and that can get out really quickly, but I think that that much manpower doubled is more than enough that we need. So, I appreciate your time and but more than anything, I appreciate Sal's time and the efforts he's been doing in the small amount of time he's been up here helping us. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. The Mid Coast Community Council is not going to present tonight. They don't, they haven't had a meeting recently. They will be here, the first meeting in September. Those of you fans of MCC can look forward to that. The next proclamation, I would like to have our city manager, Bob Nisbet, talk about. It's the recognition of our Beechwood Settlement Payment Obligation Bond payoff. Yes?
My pleasure, Mayor. Thank you very much. It was just interesting to hear everyone clap because I do think that's the appropriate response. I'm a newcomer here, obviously. I've been here nine months and this is certainly something I heard about quite a bit after I arrived at Half Moon Bay. I did not know about the history before I arrived. I did a little bit of homework because I was a client of the job as city manager and heard a little bit some pieces about some of the history that the city went through, but I really didn't get a full picture of it until after being here for nine months. And then I certainly, as I started to meet people in the community, started to hear the story of what Half Moon Bay went through with this property. And I heard different versions of the story and I heard emotions and I heard good comments and I heard bad comments and I heard a lot of different things. But, what struck me when this crossed my desk and I think it also kind of struck the great of the council members was that we should just not let this go without acknowledging it and celebrating it somehow. Whether you were for it, against it, whether it was bad or good, it came across my desk on August 1st was the fact that we were financially in position to pay off our debt on this property with Beechwood property to the tune of 10.9 million, call the bonds and pay that off so we're not stuck with paying interest on those payments for another 15 years. So, what you see before you is a proclamation that I'm about to read and we're not so much celebrating the past and the history and all the stories we heard, but we're putting, I think, as a city and as the newcomer, we're putting that chapter behind us. Financially, we're doing very well and we now have this piece of property that is really priceless. So, whatever you say about how we got here, we now have that and we're now debt-free. So, that is worth clapping for. I appreciate that. The proclamation actually says it much better, so I'm going to take the time to read it. It's a little bit long, but I think it's worth it. Whereas in 2008, the city of Half Moon Bay was ordered to purchase the Beechwood property in the amount of approximately $41 million after unsuccessfully defending its actions to preserve this important wetland and environmentally-sensitive coastal habitat area. And whereas although purchasing the Beechwood property fulfilled the respect it had at that time. And successfully reduced much of that litigation with the city's insurance debt. And whereas the city issued judgment obligation bonds to pay the remaining 16.7 million. And whereas on August 1st, 2019, the city submitted its final payment of 10.9 million on the judgment obligation bonds. And whereas with this final payment, the city has now successfully overcome the financial obligations and budget stresses related to the Beechwood property, having accomplished this, prudent, sensible fiscal management, careful and thoughtful budgeting processes, significant reductions in expenditures, and vigorous negotiations of litigation. And whereas coming out from under this financial cloud would not have been possible without the assistance and support of many community members, organizations, neighboring municipalities who've stepped in to help the city provide services that they could no longer provide themselves. And whereas Half Moon Bay's strong, close-knit community has demonstrated remarkable patience and resilience through very difficult financial times. It is with their support and dedication that the city will be able to continue contributing to and maintain the local quality of life, attend to the core services required at the city, and bring about a final resolution for financial difficulties of the past. Whereas the Beechwood property will be a resource for generations to come, providing opportunities for open space, green infrastructure, habitat restoration, education, and other benefits that will contribute to quality of life and community resilience over time. And whereas today, the future of the city of Half Moon Bay is brighter than ever as evidenced by the healthy budget of the past several years, the thriving community, and the city's renewed investment in infrastructure maintenance programs and reserves, all on behalf of the people of Half Moon Bay. So, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor of the city of Half Moon Bay and the city council hereby commemorates and celebrates the final payment of the Beechwood judgment obligation bonds, thus closing a difficult chapter of the city's history and looks forward to a thriving future that includes many benefits for the community, including updated parks, enhanced public facilities, increased sustainability efforts, infrastructure maintenance, new and expanded programs, and ample financial reserves so that this community can continue to prosper together for generations to come. I did it. That's it.
Yes. Wow.
It's been a long time coming. Really wonderful to be debt-free.
And once again, I'm the newcomer here, so I only observe and hear from people the stories, but it's really impressive to me that here we are today. I just can't say without doubt that we are. There is one speaker on this side, Mr. Mayor, John Mueller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, and staff. It was 144 a month ago, to be exact, and I have all the information here whether our proclamation is totally correct or not, but House mayors, Naomi Patrick is here this evening, Past Mayor Bonnie McClung is not well this evening, feeling a little ill, and Mayor Frazier missed it tonight. So, I will tell you, this necktie, the last time I wore it for our legal counsel, was given to me by Congressman Tom Lantos about 30-plus years, 40-years ago. And the last time I wore it, and hopefully tonight will be better results, was in front of Judge Juan Walker. I testified at that court. And had the opportunity to go back when our former police chief, Don O'Keefe, became head of US Marshals with President Obama. And the amazing judge came down and we had a nice visit and a very emotional, as you said, visit together. So, it was very stressful. I would not want to ever see a community, no matter where in America, go through what we went through. And as I said, the dates in my book here, I can remember quite vividly with the stress and the emotion all of us went through and the staff, the commitment they made to keep the city together. Marina and Naomi actually worked phones at times at City Hall. That's how short we were there. So, I do have all the documents here, but they're going to be in my treasure and I will tell you, I did negotiate. I'll be very careful with the plaintiff a number of times and I, legal counsel can correct me and shut me up, but there was a couple of times we did make an offer and the plaintiff said, "I like double numbers." I never forgot that in my life either. I like double numbers and he did get it. But, you know what? Tonight, all of you of Half Moon Bay, we heard how many years these other folks have been here. We don't need to dwell on that. We're all citizens and residents of Half Moon Bay and we love our city. But, this is pretty amazing that what we've done, all of us have done, to bring that proclamation to this community and this city tonight. And I'm proud to be part of it. I just don't ever want to have to go through that again in life, but it was one heck of an experience and how did the little guy from San Gorgio end up in front of Judge Juan Walker? But, we did it. Congratulations. And if you ever want more close information, I have it here. And we did make the right decisions, folks. We really did work hard to make the right decisions so it wasn't put on the voting of others. I could go on the rest of my life and maybe I should write a book about it. But, Farmer John did it with all the help of everybody else, so no more negotiations with those big, bad lawyers. When I was deposed at Manette Law Firm in Palo Alto, they were a famous and still are a famous land use group and I'll just say they kicked my butt. Thank you all. Congratulations. Thank you, John.
Mayor's announcements. I want to remind everybody about the Butt Blitz. Those of you who don't know about it, it's a chance to find cigarette butts in the parking lots, near stores, you work at the beach, store them in a sealed container, try to get 1,000 butts, take pictures and tag us @PacificBeachCoalition and you'll earn more from the Pacific Beach Coalition later tonight. And then after you've stored your butts, bring them to one of our site captains at a monthly beach cleanup, habitat restoration, or coastal cleanup day on September 21st. So, this is a chance to clean up the coastside and I hope to take advantage of it. The next item on the agenda is report out the closed session. I will have our council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is something to report out tonight's closed session, but I would note that the council that discussed several items in closed session, two were comprehensive legal counsel regarding listing litigation. The first regarding litigation filed by the Polittorres Foundation versus Sam. The second item was the lawsuit City of Half Moon Bay versus Greta CSD and Montara CSD, also regarding Sam. Two items of anticipated litigation and another item regarding threat to public services or facilities where the council in closed session with Captain Sal Lopez. And finally, public employee evaluation of annual evaluation of Sam. Tonight's closed session.
Thank you, Captain. City manager, updates to council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Son? Yes. We have three updates. The first one, our newest attorney, Miriam, is going to give a short presentation on the recent National Night Out that I heard a couple of weeks ago, just give a summary of how that went. Miriam.
Good evening, councilmembers. On Tuesday, August 6th. On Tuesday, August 6th, neighborhoods along the coastside came together to celebrate National Night Out. With the help of a small grant from the city, 10 neighborhoods participated in this event by coordinating block parties with potlucks, raffles, and activities for all ages. The sheriff's office, California Highway Patrol, and Coastside Fire made their way to each of the parties to meet the members of the community they protect and serve. City council members, staff commissioners, and the new superintendent of Cabrillo Unified School District, Sean McFetridge, were present at various block parties showing their support and engaging with their neighbors. Community Emergency Response Team, also known as SERIT members, were also out promoting their programs and initiatives. The San Mateo County Library was out and about with their bookmobile, handing out books and coordinating activities. The goal of National Night Out is to create a sense of community and enhance partnerships between neighbors. And this indeed happened with over 1,000 residents attending the various parties on Tuesday, on Tuesday night. National Night Out was a success and we look forward to next year's National Night Out. Thank you.
Thank you. It was wonderful. I went to three of the nights out and I enjoyed them all, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up is Todd Seeley from our Public Works Department. He's going to make a short presentation on a program we have to update the look of our street name signs. Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm here this evening just to kind of give you a quick update as to what we've been doing as far as street signage throughout the city. After several rounds of design, new street signs have been installed on all city streets north of Frenchman's Creek. This is essentially what they look like. The old signs were many years old, outdated, and faded, so we're installing these to get into compliance. I personally think they're beautiful street signs and we're doing a targeted approach. We're doing one neighborhood at a time. Signs have been ordered for the next phase, which is basically going to take us all the way down to Main Street and Highway 1 and we're going to continue working south after that. In conjunction with that, we have been... Todd, show the audience. Sorry, I want to take a minute. So, these are going to be the neighborhood signs. So, every street sign in every neighborhood is going to have signs looking like this. They're all high reflective so that when you're signing at night, they'll all be reflecting you and you'll see what's going on. They're printed and they're actually really gorgeous. So, right now, everything north of Frenchman's done and they're going to be done with down to Main and Highway 1 fairly soon, but the real ones are the Main Street ones. So, we're going to be doing essentially areas here. So, you guys can see these down. So, basically, we have the streets listed. The boundaries are going to be Main Street and going north to Mill, down to Correa's and then the east-west boundaries are going to be Johnston and Parisima. So, these signs are absolutely gorgeous. I've been in the sign game for quite some time and these are without a doubt the nicest signs I've ever seen. So, our downtown is, no joke, no joke. So, our downtown is going to be looking good when we get these all up. I actually just picked these up today, so we're going to start within the next couple of weeks. They're going to be ready for Pumpkin Fest. Downtown is going to be looking wonderful for Pumpkin Fest. And that's all I have for you this evening. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Todd.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I have one final announcement to make. I wanted to announce that this year, along with previous years, we made the comment earlier that this was a great time for the city, putting the past behind us. Financially, times have been good and our finances are stable. And on top of that, for the work that we do collectively for our budgeting, our year-end financial statements, we actually submit those for awards. And I'm happy to announce that this year, we received awards for the two documents that we complete at the end of the fiscal year. The first is called the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. In accounting speak, it's the CAFER. This is required every year. We did it on time by the end of the year. It was about a month after I started as the city manager and then we did submit it to the Government Finance Association and did receive the award. I think this is maybe the fifth or sixth year in a row. And then on top of that, we also submitted or completed and submitted what's called the Popular Annual Financial Report or CAFER. And you say, "Well, why is it called Popular?" Well, if you look at the financial report, it's black and white and for some people maybe a tough read. And so, they came out with this other document where the goal and to get the award, you actually have to make it very user-friendly, very colorful, and very easy for the public to digest. So, both these documents are on the website. We have copies at City Hall that we're happy to provide to the public. And again, we just got notification earlier this month that we did receive the acknowledgement for both documents and here's what it looks like. You get this plaque and you get to put the new year on for each of the awards. So, I just wanted to make that announcement.
Congratulations to the city. That's us. I have one speaker on the consent calendar item. Does anybody want to pull anything else? Side 1B. May I have a motion?
Can you hear me okay? I move that we approve the consent calendar. Items 1A, waive reading of resolutions and ordinances. Who said somebody called 1A? Oh, D. Okay. 1B, warrants for the month of June 2019. 1C, warrants for the month of July 2019. And 1E, treasurer's report for the quarter ending June 30, 2019. 1F, purchase of a new Ford F-250 maintenance truck. Item 1G, agreement with Stepford Inc. for Information Technology Services, not Stepford Labs. Item 1H, acceptance of the 2018-19 Sidewalk Replacement and Repair Project, CIP Project Number 562. CIP is capital for project. Item 1I, Amendment Number 2 to the Agreement for Maintenance of the State Highways in the city of Half Moon Bay. Item 1J, Amendment Number 1 to the Agreement with ELS Architecture and Urban Design, Inc. for Sound Engineering Services related to the Carter Park Renovation Project. Item 1K, Application for Statewide Park Development and Community Revitalization Program Grant Funds.
I second. I second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. I have one speaker card on item 1D, Paulette Eisen.
All right, good evening, council and staff. I just, I didn't really want to pull it, but I just wanted to address how pleased many of my neighbors who live next to the Kehoe Water Course like myself are about, first of all, the goats that came in and did a wonderful job, the clearing, that brush that is such a fire, potential fire hazard in that area. I just hope that next year, we can get the goats in a little earlier while the vegetation is still very green, rather than when it's all dry, when it starts to really get dried up. And then I'm really happy to see our, this item on the consent calendar and that we're actually making, moving the ball forward in terms of doing something about the Kehoe Water Course area. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Paulette. May I have a motion on item 1D, please?
I'll second.
All in favor of item 1D, which is the transfer... Transfer of funds from CIP projects number 563, 600, and 622 to project number 534. Do you have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Item 1D passes. The next item on our agenda is item 2A, which is the appeal of the Acting Tax Administrator Notice of Determination of Tax Due Transient Occupancy Taxes on 1430 Cabrillo Highway North at Half Moon Bay. The appellant is Chris Voissard. The procedure is going to be discussed by our council.
Yeah, I wanted to mention a few things about the procedure for this item. Is my mic just turned a little bit? I want to mention a few things about the procedure for this item. There we go. Now that's... This is an appeal to the city council and so it's a little different than a standard item. First of all, I would just note that Deputy City Manager is making the staff presentation and the city manager actually acted as our Acting Tax Administrator, so stepped into the shoes of that role because at the time, we did not have one on staff. So he is going to not be participating in this appeal since it's an appeal of his fact-finding determination. And that's for protection of the appellant so that, you know, the appellant has a fresh pair of eyes and a decision-maker on her appeal. Per the council's rule in our municipal code, appellants get 10 minutes of time to present their appeal. And the appellant may use all of that time in the initial presentation or may reserve up to three minutes of time as rebuttal. So we'll ask you when you get started how you want to proceed with that. And then I would just finally note that another protection in regards to due process is that we ask that the council members, if any of you have had any sort of extrarquet communications with the appellant, it'd be a good time to disclose that for the record, either now or when we have an opportunity to ask questions. So I think at this point, I would just remind speakers to turn speaker cards and council, if you're ready, I'll go ahead and hand my point of view back over to Matthew.
Thank you, Catherine. I am Matt Schuster, the Deputy City Manager, and I will give a brief presentation. The staff report and its attachments should have given you a pretty good history of the situation and helped you with making a decision tonight. Just by way of background, in 2017, in accordance with the council priority during that fiscal year, to prioritize collections on TOT taxes, both from hotels and short-term rentals, the city worked with HDL, which is a contractor we have that helps us with those collections, to identify and contact operators of short-term rentals here in Half Moon Bay, which are subject to the transient occupancy tax, just as hotels, hotels, campgrounds must pay a percentage of the money they collect each night that they rent their space. The property at 1430 Cabrillo Highway North was identified as one of the properties being advertised as a short-term rental. And along with many other properties, notices were sent to notify the property owner, first of all, of their necessity of coming into compliance with the transient occupancy tax requirements, and to actually offer amnesty on past monies owed as long as folks got registered with the city and began paying the taxes moving forward. In the case of 1430 Cabrillo Highway North, the owner, Chris Voissard, who is the appellant tonight, did not respond to several notices that were sent in May, July, and August of 2017. And finally, on May 10 of 2018, a notice of non-compliance was sent with estimated tax due. Because records were not provided and there was not a response from the property owner, HDL used a formula based on similarly sized homes in the area to estimate the tax that would be owed, and that was estimated at $12,658 over a period beginning in 2016. At that time, Ms. Voissard made contact with HDL, our contractor, but did not come into compliance. And on December 10, 2018, the city reported a lien against her property. That lien was noticed before it was reported and that lien is remaining on the property at this time. In January of 2019, following the recording of that lien against the property, Ms. Voissard contacted our city manager. And over several months, she corresponded and met with the city manager and myself to discuss her options and what we could do to resolve this issue. Ultimately, on April 23, 2019, the city manager offered a settlement in recognition of some of the areas that she thought were unfair or confusing, and offered to settle the amount owed for $9,000 to be paid over a 12-month period. And in exchange for that, at the end of the 12-month period, when that $9,000 had been paid in full, the city would remove the lien from her property. In accordance with the ordinance code, city's ordinance code, Ms. Voissard had the right to appeal that decision. And on June 13 of this year, we received a letter to that effect. She's provided documentation, which was provided in this staff report and packet, and that is the only documentation at this point that you can receive, but she also has our opportunity tonight to speak on the run of that. Is there any other things we need to cover on the history? Any questions from council?
Actually, I have one question. The information we received in terms of what the person contesting this sent to us is just saying that... Is it just a contesting letter or was there something else that...
There were several other documents provided, correspondence between herself and the city, some newspaper articles.
So the appellant now has an opportunity to speak?
Hi, I'm Chris Voissard. I've lived on the coast most of my life, over 50 years. I've been a teacher for 30 years and I didn't write a lot about what I already said in those documents because I figured you already read them. So I wrote something else. It's just a brief statement. I can read better than I can talk, so. Honorable mayor and city council, I trust that you've read my complaint with newspaper and the toilets, as well as the city manager's recommendation to deny my appeal to remove the $12,000 lien that was placed on my property. When the city ordinance 312 was written, there was no such thing as the internet. People never imagined that the world would partly exist in a parallel virtual reality. At the time the RITs collected, stated separately from the rent and giving the transient a receipt. The ordinance also states that I couldn't tell the people that I was going to assume the tax. The only entity that could collect the tax from the transient was the business collecting the money, and that is Airbnb. And now Airbnb is doing just that, collecting the tax from the transients and handing it over to the city. Airbnb would have been happy to do so from the beginning, had the city asked them initially. The city manager states in his agenda report for this meeting that Airbnb agreement began collecting top tax from Ms. Voissard on May 1, 2019, and going forward. This is false. Airbnb does not collect top tax from me. They collect it from the transients, the ones who owe it, and give it to the city. I still get the same amount of money I always did, and no mention or amount of top tax that they have collected on my behalf has ever been stated to me. Here's an analogy, just a made-up story. Let's just say the RITs opened a hotel in Half Moon Bay. People were skeptical. Hotels worried it would take money from their revenue. People worried about the element the RITs would bring in. The city heard these concerns, but on the other hand, thought, think of all the top tax. The RITs said, sure, we'll pay the top tax, but you're going to have to acknowledge that we're here. The city, caught in the middle, what to do, what to do? Then a shady guy says, hey, while you're deciding, I'll get the money out of the maid. I'll take my cut and you can have the rest. The city goes along with this until the people finally decide that the RITs is okay, nothing bad had happened. And the city makes an agreement with the RITs. The RITs owes nothing in back taxes, and the maid does. The maid, who refused to pay the bully, who came across as a scammer, now has a lien on her house. I'm asking you to consider removing the $12,657.91 lien against me, which is a completely fictionalized amount and was placed without notice from the city. Although HDL said they had records, they did not. A tax lawyer who worked with me pro bono advised me the lien was not valid because the city never gave me an official notice. After I informed Bob Nesbit of this, he sent me a notice after the fact, only now the amount was $9,000 even. The amount of top the city would have collected from my rental during the time period was only $6,700. The agenda report from the city manager says that Ms. Voissard never provided sufficient documentation to justify her claims that the city's estimate of the tax due was incorrect. This is not true. I sent Bob Nesbit a screenshot of my earnings from Airbnb during the period that is in question. I believe the right thing for the city council to do is to remove the lien from my property that is wrecking my otherwise good credit. I don't have the money. If I had money, I wouldn't be renting my house out on Airbnb. And like the city says, they are doing really well financially. Today, the business community of the United States made a statement that they want to move away from the ruthless profit-maximizing and self-perpetuation to a philosophy that focuses more on public regard and legitimacy. I would like to see our city do the same. But if not now, eventually, what is true and right will come to light. Time will tell. And I am proud that I'm going down in this matter having stood up to the harassment, the surveillance, and what I see as an infringement of my civil liberties, my right to privacy, and my property rights.
Thank you, Chris.
I can also speak to, I mean, I don't know, this probably isn't the time that I put to what Ray, the first speaker, said.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
I'd like to also speak to what Ray, the first speaker, said, and maybe this isn't the time, I don't know.
No, no, this is a different...
Okay. That's it, Ray, that's it. I said, or do I...
We need to have a public hearing about this appeal. I'm opening the public hearing. Does anybody in the public want to speak? Hearing none, I close the public hearing.
I just want to say that knowing other people in Half Moon Bay who are doing, you know, having these short-term rentals and who have been paying, who registered with the city, who got their license, who paid the TOT tax even though they found a way to pay it. So I think that, I mean, for someone to just say, hey, I didn't pay, I didn't want to pay, I don't think I should pay, and just, you know, let's just forget about it all, I think is a little, frankly, audacious. That's it.
Thank you, Paulette. You may rebut.
I can rebut to that. I actually believe that the city should give back the money to everyone that they got from illegally. Because they surveilled on the people, we weren't able to collect the tax that came out of our pocket.
Thank you. Does the council have any comments or questions?
So I could go on in this topic all day. When I first went in front of council for the first time in my entire life, it was on this issue because I was, I had started an Airbnb out of a back office that we have in our home. And I had gotten the letters from them asking for me to start paying taxes on it. And I also thought they were menacing letters and I didn't really know how to go about it. It was kind of hard to decipher at the start, and this was many years ago. And it took me a little while to figure out exactly what to do. And I agree with you 100% that the money comes out of the person who is overseeing the Airbnb, which is not the way it's supposed to be done. But just for the record, I've been doing it correctly for the past two and a half, three years, or ever since I figured out exactly what to do. And I got the amnesty or went through the process. And so I have to say that I have very little... I don't feel that you were done wrong against because I've been through the exact process and I know Airbnb very well. And I'm one of the people that's been pushing council and staff to go into the agreement that we now are in with Airbnb, which I think is going to be very beneficial for the town. And I think we've already seen tremendous benefits from that financially. I think that'll help us moving forward. But realistically, very clearly on Airbnb website, and as you go into the process, the tax documents, if you go through them, explains that you must comply with the taxes of all local jurisdictions. We have rules here, they are supposed to be followed, the TOT. I have talked to many other people along the way that are paying the taxes, that have their business licenses. And knowing that you went back and forth with the city manager and other people on staff, I don't see any reason but to hold you responsible for the money that you owe.
I also went back and forth with Airbnb on this, saying, how am I supposed to collect this tax? And they said the only way to do it is show up at the house after the people get there and get it for them in cash.
There are three ways to do it. There are three ways to do it, right? So the one-
And then I still wouldn't be getting the money at the time that the initial lien was paid, like the ordinance states. The other thing it said that we could do is after they leave, try to get it from them.
No, I agree.
There's no feasible way of collecting.
For two and a half years, whereas I was going through it, I paid it out of my own pocket because-
Right. And that's, but the city could have collected, got Airbnb to collect it from minute one, they were willing to do so. Instead, they paid a bunch of money to this HCL company who surveilled us.
I hear what you're saying, but I can't agree with that.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Can I have them?
Oh, sorry.
I just want to say that there were several years that went by. You received several notices which you didn't respond to.
None of the notices were from the city. They were all from a company that I thought was a scammer because it said top processing center in Fresno, California. They did every single thing a scammer does. If you look on websites and say, "How to protect yourself from scams," they did every one of them.
At any rate, there were several years that went by. You were offered a settlement, you were offered amnesty, and you refused the amnesty. So-
The amnesty, what is the amnesty?
The amnesty was about back taxes. But the city said, "Okay, you haven't been paying since 2016."
The city never contacted me until I got a lien on my house.
Well, that's not what I heard, I'm sorry. The city is HCL.
City is not HCL. HCL works for every city in this state.
Yes, they work for our city.
According to the lawyer, you have to have a notice from the city, not from, they're a software company in Diamond Bar, California, who misrepresented themselves at first, saying they were in Half Moon Bay, and they are not.
I think the amnesty argument is very strong. Everybody was offered it, and I believe everybody, with the exception of yourself, took that amnesty and worked to register so that they could pay going forward. So I think that was a serious mistake on your part. I think this all could have been avoided, plus you were offered a settlement. And then the issue of placing liens on homes, I agree, that's awful. I think that's really scary. The thing is, it's common practice with any property-related tax, if you're in a REER, you can have a lien.
Not for cities to do it, according to the tax lawyer.
It could have been done by someone who's doing work on your house, as a contractor or what have you. So liens, it's official practice. So that had to be understood when you were, you know, foregoing paying your taxes, that was a possibility.
They're not my taxes, they're the transient's taxes.
So I'm not sympathetic to your-
I do pay my taxes. I've never not paid my taxes, federal and state taxes.
I'm just talking about the TOT.
Right, those are owed by the transient.
So my recommendation would be, and we can go vet this out a little bit further, but I have not seen records, and you claim that you've given them, so I don't personally see them, on what the taxes are according to the income that was received during that time period.
Not exactly, but around $6,700.
Right. So I think you should provide that information to the city.
I did.
Okay, well, I haven't seen it, so I mean, that's, you know, and I think we should possibly then lower what we're asking for according to those figures, and I would be okay with that, just throwing it out there. Curious here with the rest of the council.
I'd be open to negotiation on that point for, you know, extending the time period for paying, but the lien, I believe, needs to remain on there until-
Shouldn't it be the right amount? Shouldn't it be a real amount?
Well, that's why I said I concur with Councilmember Eisen's recommendation to look at your data that you provided again and, you know, entertain a smaller amount. But it's going to need to be paid, and the lien should remain until, I suppose.
So the lien is for the $12,000-plus amount? And we're not discussing, the appeal is for-
The lien to be taken off.
Taken off. And that, I believe, is what we need to vote on tonight. That's what the hearing is about, whether or not to take the lien off. And we need to vote on that, and it has to be a roll call vote, and I'm prepared to start that.
I'm just gonna talk really loud because the mic's not.
Yeah, good.
So the lien is in the amount of, oh, there it goes. It's in the amount of the estimated tax owed, which was based, like I said, on a formula. We did receive-
Square footage of houses.
The documentation from Ms. Voisard, as she mentioned, a screenshot of some information. When the city manager requested better documentation, we not provided. So the lien is for the original estimated amount. What our recommendation to staff is, is to accept the findings and to accept the settlement amount, which is $9,000. So it's not the full amount that was calculated by HCL, but a lower amount over a 12-month period in order to have the full agreement.
So I guess, I guess, are we able to change that amount to whatever is provided from Ms. Voisard based on the information during that time period, giving us the correct, right, $9,000 pending, or however you want to do it?
Yes, and I'll defer to Catherine, but I believe what we can do is you can give us direction, and if we get the right documentation, we can come back with just the consent item in the amount and resolve that later.
Is that it, though?
So- Not really, but, so then I'd like to make, do you want to speak anything else before I make a motion?
No, you know, it's just like, I don't know, it feels like I'm being painted in the light of trying to get out of something, and that's not it. It's more like my feelings were hurt that these horrible letters started coming, instead of really just being upfront and saying what I needed to do.
Well, I'm hoping we can make it right by going through this process, or at least to the best of our abilities, so.
And I would just recommend, don't put a number on it right now. Let's see what the document actually says.
What's better than what I sent you? Because that's from Airbnb.
I think it's gotta be more than a screenshot. So we can work with you to figure out, like, the proper document.
We've been through this before with different types of, not this particular item, but he'll make sure that he's asking for what he needs. So I'd like to adopt a resolution. So I guess I'm going to deny the appeal for the time being. Continue with the item.
Yeah, so then we-
Been here.
I would recommend that we continue this item with direction to staff to meet again with Ms. Voisard and to receive additional documentation, and then come back to council with a renewed staff recommendation.
And I think we need a good timeline. So maybe by the Sept- what's the second meeting, September? September 17?
That should not be a problem because the information's on the website, so there's no excuse to not be able to provide it.
To provide what? The mine, me?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I don't know what more to-
Yeah, so.
It'll be three years, just to be clear, it'll be three years of information going back to the original lien. So we'll need to get the documentation.
Okay.
So what do you need from me?
I think at this point, we have probably all the direction that we need. As a formality, let's move to continue this item to the September 17.
All right, so moved.
Second.
And you want me to bring you the stuff before that? Okay.
All in favor of continuing this item till September 17? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's have a five-minute break and come back here at 25 after 8, please.
Let's have a five-minute break and come back here at 25 after 8, please.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
That was me over here when I plugged in the headphone.
Oh my goodness.
Well, that's the thing with this whole deal right now is because we have whatever we have on the computer overlay everything, all our video. So that's why if I do anything on here, it comes up.
Yeah.
That's why when I plug, when I, how you plug the HDMI over here, that's when the music started playing, that's when the music started playing.
Oh, okay. It's like, oh, surround sound.
I know, and it's like the middle presentation of it.
Yeah, you kind of helped her.
I know, right? Thank you. Get her thought back. Oh, no.
I have a new adopted dog and he's waiting for him, so please, pay for his seat.
Good. I like that head sound, it's good. Some class.
Yeah.
The next item on our agenda is Tana Panpana Sheriff's Office Law Enforcement Annual Report.
So. Thank you, Mayor, and all the council members. I appreciate the opportunity to present the 2019 Sheriff's Office Annual Report to the community and to the council. This report is stats that are compiled from June of 2018 to July of 2019, so it's a four-month period where we gather the stats. Some of the topics that all present are the law enforcement services that we provide to the community, calls for service, crime trends and arrests, customer satisfaction survey per our contract with the city of Hattaway, CARON program, the SAL program, and then other notable events and activities that we do within the community. And I'll go ahead and describe those acronyms during the presentation. The first slide is going to be the calls for service, again, July 2018 to June 2019. There were a total of 14,058 calls for service within the city limits of Hattaway in comparison to 12,167. So that was an increase of approximately 1,900 calls for service.
That's a lot.
It is. And you can see the breakdown between resident-initiated calls, basically Hattaway residents calling in either 911 or our non-emergency number, or deputies initiating the actual call where they observe certain situations and they actually create the call themselves. So even though we had 19 more calls, we were actually more efficient and quicker to respond to emergency calls. In the bottom section, you'll see that we responded on average at 3 minutes and 8 seconds in comparison to 3 minutes and 23 seconds last year. So to Mr. Hollister's point, we do get there within 3 minutes on average. And again, for the second part of that non-emergency, we average about 10 minutes, and that is usually a call that is prioritized based on emergency calls that we're receiving. The next slide here is going to be Part 1 crimes that were reported. It still remains very low, as you can see. Last year, we had a total of 288 Part 1 crimes. This year, we've had 318. I do have a breakdown of some of the increases that gave us that overall number. One was vehicle burglaries that I have addressed previously at city council meetings. Usually, these victims were from out of town visiting our local coastal areas, beaches, restaurants, and they were leaving valuables in their cars that were visible to people that were looking for opportunities for crimes, and they were able to access those cars. So there was only a slight increase of 30 cases for the entire year. We were successful in 54 arrests regarding that number of 318. The other number that I wanted to highlight is the actual traffic enforcement. The council and also many community members had complained previously about the lack of traffic enforcement, so I did bring in a part-time motor officer who concentrated on those efforts along with the patrol deputies that work within the city limits. So we did issue 2,128 moving violations. And in the next couple of slides, you'll see that there was a substantial increase in moving citations. So for Part 1 crimes, many people ask, what are they? There's a list on the left-hand side, homicide, sexual assault, robbery, assault, burglary, theft, and so forth. The top four Part 1 crimes that were reported to us were simple assaults, there were 55 of those, 63 were burglaries, vehicle burglaries. Within a three-month period, we had a substantial amount of those burglaries being reported. Our patrol deputies did great work. They worked with our investigations bureau, which is comprised of numerous detectives in our crime suppression unit, and we followed up on many of those cases, and we were able to arrest close to a dozen suspects responsible for a lot of those burglaries, and it was specifically for one specific neighborhood in San Francisco. They knew that this was a target-rich environment for property crimes, and they took advantage of it, mainly for, again, visitors from out of town, not so much the Hattaway residents. And again, this is just a graph on last year, 2017 and 2018. You see Part 1 crime arrests were at 48 in comparison to 54. So not only did we have the increase in reports, but we also had the increase in arrests. For DUI, and I'll speak a little bit about the DUI stats as well. Last fiscal year, we had 46 arrests for DUI, and this year, 39. I credit that to the Rideshare programs, education, and traffic enforcement that we've conducted. We've also done several social media campaigns, saying that we will be out there during major holidays like St. Patrick's Day, 4th of July, where we're focused on not only regular enforcement, but also DUI enforcement, so I think people do get that message. And these are just some of the comparison graphs from last year to this year in regards to traffic citations. Last year was 921, the previous year, I believe it was close to 500, so every year, we've increased over 100% in enforcement. So we're going to continue doing that, we're going to bring in other resources from around the sheriff's office to continue that enforcement and hopefully educate not only locals, but I think, again, a lot of visitors that come in the weekends and impact the community. We do hear your complaints, so we're responding to them with traffic enforcement. Parking citations were slightly down. We had a record year last year, we had a full-time community service officer who was very tenacious, but she was promoted to correctional officer, so it took us some months to find a replacement, but luckily, I had a local kid who decided to work with us, and he actually had very successful numbers as well, so I guess 3,400 parking citations. For the contract, as the council knows, we have to send out surveys after there's a victim that reports a crime within the city of Hattaway, an actual resident, we send them a survey card, satisfaction survey card, and they basically respond anonymously on how our deputies performed during their call. We received, we sent out 97 surveys and 24 were returned, so there is a low return rate, but we did get a 99.9% satisfaction or above satisfaction rate by the residents that did take the time to send them back in. So, community events, as everybody knows, we have quite a bit of community events here in Hattaway and around the coast, but specifically within the city limits in Main Street. We do provide incident command, which basically means that we use mutual aid, responses, and also uniform officers from around the sheriff's office. We only have a certain limit of staffing here, but we reach out to every other patrol bureau around the county to help us out on all the different events that are listed there. And we also reach out to our emergency services bureau, which organizes logistics and threat assessments for all the events. And again, public safety is our priority. I know there's been a lot of conversation regarding Pumpkin Festival. I can assure you that we have not only had collective meetings with the beautification committee, but also the city manager's office, Public Works, the Chamber of Commerce, we're all working together as one with CAL FIRE, and we're going to be taking a unified command approach, which basically means that in a certain location, we're going to have representatives of all involved parties. Even the vendors that are on Main Street will have a representative with us. So the messaging will be unified, it's going to be in real time, and again, we constantly, for the Pumpkin Festival, we've done threat assessment analysis for the festival. We feel very good about the staffing that we have for that event and the resources that we're going to have here on the coast side. We are increasing uniform presence, and that's something that has been told to the council and all the other department heads. So we're all working together to have a safe event here coming up in October. And again, I will say that part of the public's responsibility is to also notify us if you see anything suspicious in any of the events, it doesn't have to be Pumpkin Festival, it can be a religious gathering or a community party. So we do welcome any and all information. And again, utilizing mutual aid, that basically means that as a designated chief of police here for the city, I get to work with the 20 other police chiefs around the county to send resources not only to them, but also send them our way, and they are very much inclined to send us all the resources available to the Pumpkin Festival and beyond. And one of the things that we're most proud of at the sheriff's office is our Sheriff's Activities League and also our community policing unit. As you can see here, listed, we work with numerous groups and numerous nonprofits. It encompasses hundreds of kids on a yearly basis. Not only do we have during school year programming, after-school programs, but also during the summer months, we have leadership programs as well. So with that, if we can just play a quick highlight video of some of the activities that they conduct. There it is. Great music. So, I will say that a lot of these trips, we go across country, take the kids, and part of the leadership program, they go to New York, they go to Washington DC, and our Junior Giants program as well that we sponsor. And one of the new classes that the SAL program created was coding. This year, not only did they involve kids from the coast, but they actually transported them from the coast side to the bay side to attend these classes. And all of these classes are taught by our deputies and SAL coordinators throughout the year.
Sal, could you explain what SAL and CARON stand for?
Absolutely. So SAL is the Sheriff's Activities League, similar to PAL for city municipalities, and CARON is a community alliance to revitalize our neighborhoods. That program was created by Sheriff Don Horstley at the time, about 20 years ago, in order to build trust and transparency to the community in North Fairlands, and it's expanded county-wide now with all sheriff's office jurisdictions.
And it's conducted with Spanish, right?
Correct, yes. Both programs are bilingual. We have deputies that speak both languages, and we're really proud of expanding, it initially started with the Spanish-speaking population, and it's expanded to every group in the county. We even have programs for the Polynesian community up north and also the Asian community And speaking a little bit about CARON, we have multiple events, coffee with the cops. This basically entails several deputies and occasionally myself showing up at a school here at the library or other public venues where we bring donuts, you guessed it. We bring donuts and coffee for parents dropping their kids off, and it's just a time for us to actually get to know people in the neighborhood. And this program is conducted again throughout the county, and specifically here in Hattaway and the coast side, we visit almost every school twice a year during the school year. Another great workshop that was done, actually here at the library if I'm not mistaken, was preventing bullying. There was a request from the community that parents wanted to learn about how they can talk to their kids and school administrators about their kids being affected by bullying, so this was a workshop to teach them how to approach that subject in a sensitive way with their children that are being affected by that. Another great program that we conducted here was a six-week course designed for behavioral difficulties. Again, this was a request of the community where there was a lot of mental illness in play, and a lot of parents were concerned about issues that they had identified with their kids. So this program or academy was to teach parents, not only were we there to assist them, but there was a lot of county programs that were available to them to get the help that they needed, not only for the family unit, but also for the individual child. And these are just some of the photos of the graduations that we had here and other So another thing that we're proud of here at the city of Hattaway is that we partnered up with the city manager's office, a lot of nonprofits, the Homeless Average Team, to come up with a unified game plan, not only enforcement, but also help private property owners, but also the homeless population in order to get help. We've been part of the cleanup of the Prisima 3 area, Naomi Patridge Trail as well, we had received a lot of complaints about that area. We dealt with Caltrans and CHP as well, because right underneath Highway 1 is state property, so we worked together with them to try to mitigate that area as well. We also helped out in the cleanup behind Safeway, as many people know, and also created a Pobbler Beach enforcement and education plan that we worked with the city manager's office and Public Works as well, and it's continuing. And again, clearing the homeless encampments, we're finding that not only are we providing resources with a lot of the nonprofits for helping them get those resources, there's also an enforcement aspect that we have to conduct in order to help out the private property owners that are impacted as well by this issue. Another program that the sheriff's office offers to the city of Hattaway and everywhere else in the county, it's called the PERC program. This was created several years ago, it's the psychiatric emergency response team. This is made up of one sheriff's office detective, two to be two detective, we're increasing it, with a behavioral health clinician from the county BHRS, Behavioral Health Division. And basically, they review every 51-50 case, so they do mental evaluations on the victims of that disease, they'll follow up with family members who call 911 or have a deputy respond to their homes, and they will hopefully direct them to get services, the services that they need. A lot of family members that deal with mental health, they really don't know that the county does offer a lot of programming to have some type of, you know, treatment or just resources for them to better their lives. So PERC followed up on 55 cases here in Hattaway, and one of the significant ones, there was a high school child that was having a mental health crisis, and the PERC detective actually responded the same day, was able to meet with the parents and also the school officials, and were able to get that child help. And that happens more often than not, but anytime there's availability of PERC, they will respond out to the coast.
So.
Yes.
Is there an immediate need? Somebody has called 911 because of a mental health issue. How long does it take PERC to get there?
Well, they are not going to be the first responders, a deputy will always respond first. Every deputy assigned to Hattaway has crisis intervention training, which is a 40-hour course that specifically trains on how to handle de-escalation issues, similar to what I explained about if there is a mental health crisis episode, the deputies will assess that person if they need further treatment.
Thank you.
And then they'll refer the case to PERC. One of the other topics that I did want to mention tonight is the sheriff's office immigration policy. It's come to my attention on many occasions in regards to not only trust, but building those relationships with the community, the Spanish-speaking community who's so concerned about this issue. So I did want to highlight our policy for 14. It basically requires all deputies to conduct themselves in, with an equal enforcement of the law and abide by all the state laws, regardless of anyone's national origin or immigration status. So at the sheriff's office, we're always going to treat everybody equally, no matter where they're from or what their legal status is here. We also abide by Senate Bill 54, which is a sanctuary law, and which limits us We also abide by Senate Bill 54, which is a sanctuary law, and which limits us interacting with federal agencies only within that, we only work within the parameters of SB 54, which I'm sure many are aware of the details of that law. The other reason why we, or the sheriff, decided to implement this law or this policy is to encourage people to report crimes. We have found that in many occasions, several underserved communities do not report significant incidents or crimes due to the fact that there's trust issues. So I wanted to make it a point tonight, and through many conversations with community leaders, that we do not work with immigration officials because that is a civil violation. We just deal with the criminal element with state law issues. And lastly, if you'll see at the bottom, "Deputy shall not inquire into an individual's immigration status for immigration enforcement purposes." So that's right there. Our deputies follow the policy, because if they don't, there's consequences. And that is all I have, unless the council has questions over there.
Questions, Mr. Sal? Not a question, but a comment. Thank you so much for the report.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
The next item on the agenda is the Green Infrastructure Plan Study Study.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
We have an agenda management recommendation. We feel there are probably, the majority of the people that are here are probably here for Item 3C, so it's our recommendation that we take Item 3C before Item 3B.
So ordered. Matthew will talk.
Item 3C is Community Service Financial Assistant Grant Program, and I will now turn it over to Deputy City Manager Matthew.
Can you hear me? Yes. Hi, I'm, again, Matthew Chivison, Deputy City Manager. I'm pleased to be before you tonight with our management analyst for Community Services, Victor Guy-Pon. I will introduce the item, but he will give you the report, and he's been our project manager for this project and done a great job with it. So tonight, we're here to talk about the Community Services Financial Assistance Program. It's a program that was introduced last year as a pilot, and you as a council decided to continue it forward this year. I think the pilot went very successfully, and it's been a good resource to the nonprofits in the city. It's something that many cities do and is a way for the city to participate in supporting social programs throughout the city and supporting our nonprofits. And with that, I'll turn the time over to Victor.
Thank you, Matthew. Good evening, council. So I'll start with a bit of background on the program. So fiscal year 2018-2019, it was the first year, fiscal year 2019 was the first year that we held this program. Last year, we had 16 organizations apply, and of those 16, 15 organizations received funding, had a total funding of $129,750. And then, moving on to this year for the fiscal year 2019-2020 cycle, the council determined that a subcommittee should be formed in order to assist city staff in creating selection criteria and to be a part of the review process. And then at the March 5th, 2019, City Council meeting, the council confirmed the subcommittee, composed of Mayor Harvey Rhabak and Councilmember Debbie Riddick, and also allocated $150,000 from the general fund for this fiscal year of the cycle. So due to the program's popularity from last year, this year we received a total of 34 applications, which is more than double what we received last year. And the total requested funding from all 34 applications totaled $691,719. So not an easy decision to make. And to assist in the review and recommendation process for this year, the council subcommittee developed a set of standard criteria. While there were several criteria, that subcommittee considered the most heavily weighted criteria for whether the project is vital for serving low, very low, and extremely low-income Hafnun Bay residents, or underserved populations, and whether the program serves a significant number of Hafnun Bay residents. And other criteria that were considered among these criteria included goal-setting, collaboration, program impact and effectiveness, and aligning with City Council priorities and strategic elements. And we'll say that these criteria were not intended to serve as the sole determinant in the review and recommendation process, but more as a tool to aid in discussion. And we met with the subcommittee throughout the summer several times. They reviewed all the applications very thoroughly, so with that, the subcommittee recommends the following. And I'll show this first, we'll go through it, and then I'll show slides for the organizations that have not been recommended for funding, and then we'll come back here for a discussion portion. That's all right. So these, this is the first slide of organizations that have been recommended for funding this year. They're in alphabetical order and in order by funding amount. So starting with the largest recommended funding, moving on to the smallest amount, for a total of $150,000, which allocated this year. And here we have a slide of Texas Little Swan, apologies for that, but it's all the organizations, all of the other 19 organizations that have not been recommended for funding this year. And again, it was not an easy decision for the subcommittee, but one that they recommended. So next steps after, say, after the council makes their final determination on who will be funded for this year, staff will finalize the agreements with the organizations, and same as last year, reported documents will require a make-up report in January 2020, and end of year report, and a financial statement in June 2020. But for today, staff recommends that for fiscal year 2019-2020, City Council approved funding for the 15 organizations had recommended by the subcommittee. Now, though, back to the other slides.
So that's the end of our report, and we're happy to discuss the recommendations and any other things you'd like to discuss in relation to this item.
I just want to thank Victor and Matthew for incredible amount of work that they had to do to enable Debbie and I to do what we did. Without all the groundwork they did, we would have had a hell of a harder time. And I also want to emphasize, with $700,000 in applications and $150,000 available, there's inevitably going to be very, very good organizations that do good work that weren't funded, and I'm hopeful that next year we can increase the amount and get even more nonprofits on board.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just, I'd also like to thank the subcommittee. It's an extremely difficult thing to do, to turn down somebody who has a good organization and has a need. We know there's a need there, but there are limits on what we can do. I would also like to recommend that next year we increase the amount of total funding to $200,000.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate, I appreciate you all going through the exercise. You know, I heard quite a bit from a lot of the programs that applied this year. You know, obviously, some places more disappointed than others, and it's not easy, it's not easy to narrow it all down, so I appreciate the work that you did, and I understand the rationale for it, so.
So I can just give, shed a little bit of light on our thinking processes. So, thank you Victor and Matthew, your help was outstanding. So we felt it was important to be able to provide services to underserved and low-income communities, because they have very other, few other resources to apply to their various issues. So that was one. The other one was, was it a relatively established organization? Do they have success delivering services? We thought we wanted to support people who are already doing important work and make it more effective. And it's very important for us that we not, like, pay for staff that they wouldn't otherwise be able to hire, because when our money's gone, we don't have people who lose their jobs. So you had to be able to provide, you know, additional service above what you were already providing, so that the community gets benefit, you know, for their dollar. And there were some wonderful programs with the schools that we really liked, but again, it was important to make sure that more people were served by our dollar, that the school was sort of a limited community when there was these other needs, people needing food, for instance, or mental health services. So the school thing, we kind of had to put boundaries around. We went with a big lift because we feel that literacy benefits our entire community, not just the individual or their family or the school, but the entire community benefits from people being able to read and write, get jobs, and function in the community. And they have demonstrated success, not just locally, but countywide as well. So we were trying to maximize, you know, the taxpayer dollar, you know, taking it as far as we could go, serving the people who needed it most. And it was a tough decision, because like I said, there were many good programs. The Coastside Land Stewards, you know, we all know that we need to do a better job providing stewardship of the environment, but as a private, you know, nonprofit, that there are other opportunities to get those funds. My agency, the Coastal Conservancy, for instance, provides educational grants, there's going to be a grant source for watershed coordinators and education, so there was another way at that, we thought, whereas not so easy with some of these other programs. So we're happy to add value to the community again this year, hope to do it again. We're going to be, you know, watching the economy, but we feel we're all stronger together by, you know, having our stake in community services as well, even though we're not a social service agency. So it was tough, but I want to say thank you to my partner, Mayor Rhabak. You know, we didn't always agree, but we compromised and talked things out, and staff was willing to talk things out with us too, so we had some, you know, very wonderful, energetic meetings. It was a good effort all around. Thank you.
Can we have a motion? Do we, do we need a motion? Yes. I, I think all the speakers have been discouraged, but if anybody really wants to speak...
Oh, one of those that were just here to thank you. Their presence is thanks enough, is what we determined.
Yes, that's absolutely true.
Good job. Yes. Plus nicer ways.
Yeah, we, we had a number of speakers who were funded and were going to hear the thanking, thank us, and a couple of organizations said that they were here to answer questions, but I don't hear any questions.
All right, well, I'd like to recommend, let's see, can we receive, receive the applicant funding recommendations from the Community Services Financial Assistance CSFA Grant Program Subcommittee and determine the funding for the allocations totaling, for 2019, 2020, totaling $150,000 from the general fund. Let's move forward.
One second.
All in favor of the recommendation? Aye. And the opposition? Congratulations to the organizations that have done it.
I would just like to, again, thank Victor. It's gracious that I'm included, but Victor really did a lot of great work. You know how things went last year. I think Victor can be credited for all the work that he did, and really grateful to him for his work.
Thank you, Victor.
Yes, exactly, exactly. The other thing I'd like to add is, one of the great benefits of this program is it connects staff and city council with the nonprofits. And I've spoken to many of the nonprofits that were not recommended for funding, and there's still an opportunity for us to work with them and to support them in other ways. And so it's great to make those connections, and so I think we're reaping a lot of benefits from this program, so thank you.
And making a flag again next year.
Yes. And next year, I hope we have even more money that we give out to the nonprofits. The last agenda item? The last item on our agenda is the Green Infrastructure Plan Study Study.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Evelyn, and I'm here to introduce Catherine from CSG. We worked out together on the Green Infrastructure Plan. We provided a detailed presentation of the draft plan, which includes the transition from traditional to green infrastructure and the milestones that the city will meet over time. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, in your place, I'm Beverly Eber. Mayor Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, I'm Catherine Sheehan, I work with CSG. And I've worked with the city for about four years in the stormwater and PSC program management. And I also helped the city develop its Green Infrastructure Plan. So I'm excited today to present this topic and help the city embark on a renewed effort of transforming the urban landscape into a more environmentally friendly city. So just a quick recap of what we're going to cover in this presentation. First, we're going to go over a little bit of what was discussed at the April 16 study session, which was a review of municipal regional permit and what green infrastructure is. And then we're going to take a deeper dive into the elements of the Green Infrastructure Plan, namely the Green Infrastructure Milestones and the Means and Methods of Implementation. And that implementation includes a tracking system, a process of screening potential projects, the standard operating procedures that fit with the municipal code, and some early project implementation opportunities, and then we'll conclude with next steps. So first, a recap of the Municipal Regional Permit. Development of the Green Infrastructure Plan, also called the GI Plan, I'm just going to say GI, so it's not the same, but it's a regulatory requirement under the MRP, which is the Municipal Regional Stormwater Permit. And the GI Plan will require policies and procedures to reduce pollutants, to waterways by the regulatory deadline of 2030. Already, the city must be implementing knownest opportunities, and then we will be submitting the completed Green Infrastructure Plan to the Water Board by September 30 of 2019 as part of our annual report. So what is green infrastructure? As our, as a refresh, our goal is to implement GI in as many ways as possible to treat stormwater runoff, but also to achieve other benefits of green infrastructure. The table on the right summarizes the many benefits of green infrastructure in addition to water quality improvement, like me both of greening and flooding reduction. And it's a way of protecting the coast and local water bodies, and it synchronizes with the city's other goals and priorities, including sustainability, environmental protection and stewardship, and coastal protection. It can include permeable pavements, stormwater printers, which are also called green gardens or biotention areas, and then rainwater harvesting and filtration systems, screen roofs, and many other measures which can reduce or treat stormwater runoff before it enters water bodies. And it can have a positive impact on our community. And it can have a positive impact on our communities, promoting health and economic So other San Antonio County municipalities are required to install green infrastructure to meet the reduction of certain pollutants, specifically PCPs and mercury, in the San Francisco Bay. But because the city of Hafn Bay doesn't drain to the San Francisco Bay, it's not tied to those specific pollutant reductions. However, Water Board staff have provided clarifying information that they want every municipality to develop a green infrastructure plan, to be participating in the broader goal of promoting water quality throughout San Antonio County. And so Hafn Bay is participating in this process as part of that. And they also clarified that they expected there to be green infrastructure implementation targets. So for the other municipalities, they would work backwards from a pollutant reduction goal to come up with how much GI is necessary to meet that goal. For Hafn Bay, we approached it a little differently since we didn't have that pollutant reduction goal. We went from our opportunities and then scaled up to what communities if we achieved by 2040 through our capital program and what we expect this development to happen. And then we set voluntary targets for 2020, 2030, 2040. And we're really alluding to what is being done in other agencies. We want it to be familiar looking to what other counties or other agencies are doing, though we are different and apart from what they're doing because of the lack of load reduction goals. So a number of projects contribute to the milestones, which I'm going to go over a little bit in the next slides. So starting with the bottom to the top on the right-hand graphic, existing projects, which have already been installed in HAFGI. Then there's what will be anticipated for future new redevelopment. Then regional projects, which are countywide projects that are funded countywide by maybe toll trains or through a new flood and sea level rise resiliency agency that they're planning on developing, that could have funding, that could be put towards GI and also to meet other goals. Finally, we have green streets or the public green infrastructure that would be installed, and then other. So we did an assessment of the existing projects in Hafn Bay, which were C3 regulated. This term comes from Provision C3 of the MRP. So the projects are already required to include green infrastructure as a condition of development, if they meet certain thresholds. And so this was a summary of all those Provision C3 projects, and we found that seven point four acres are of impermeable surface already managed through existing C3 projects. And then we have non-regulated projects. So Hafn Bay is unique in that it, it has authority to, it, it's required to implement the California Coastal Act. So as a condition of development, the, the developments have to comply with the coastal development permit, which usually includes green infrastructure as a condition in order to protect the coast. So Hafn Bay has actually been implementing green infrastructure on projects that were not otherwise regulated through the Coastal Development Act, or, sorry, Coastal Act. So to protect the California coast. So examples in this would be school properties, which wouldn't otherwise be subject to the MRP. So for example, the Hatch School, at Pillar Seaters High School, they have some fire retention areas. Hunaha has a historic fire retention area and some new fire retention areas. And then the Pacific Ridge subdivision, which was installed prior to the current treatment requirements. Oops, sorry. And then that was about 5.3 acres of impermeable surface managed through non-regulated projects. And then we also have hydrogen emic separator units, which are mechanical devices which can treat stormwater. So in a technical sense, these aren't green infrastructure in that they don't have vegetative systems that act together with them, but they do provide measurable stormwater treatment. And prior to 2009, they were even used for projects as stormwater treatment. So an example would be the Pacific Ridge subdivision, which installed what they called CBS units, which is a type of hydrogen emic separator. And for these, we wanted to include them as part of our suite of options that are, at least in the past, that would have contributed towards green infrastructure and stormwater quality. And we assumed that they would, we would get about 20% credit for those, and that's consistent with some research that's done by the county that shows that CBS units have a pollutant removal efficiency of about 20%. So that was a lot of acreage, 16.7 acres. And I should also say on the left, so we mapped all of these existing projects and included that as part of the GI Plan, and it's also now on the city's website. And it would be updated over time to track progress towards the milestones. And then we tried to forecast out potential green infrastructure projects. So first, we completed a screening of the Capital Improvement Project, and we tried to select those projects where it would be most likely that green infrastructure would be included. Often, these were projects that included storm drain or some water improvements already. And in other cases, they appear to have green infrastructure at potential intersections. And so taking a broad look, because many of these, it's very early in the stages, they haven't been designed yet, we wanted to see the maximum amount of area that could drain to those projects and then try to come up with a reasonable goal or target of how much we could treat with GI by including GI on that project. This is just because we needed to, we wanted to come at a goal that was reasonable and forecast out what we, we would see with public green infrastructure. But then if, in the event that these projects don't include green, green infrastructure, or maybe not as much as we show, we would, the city's intention would be to backfill that with other opportunities which might arise, because again, this is just a snapshot at what we have now. There may be more opportunities between now and 2040 that we can't know about. So it's sort of a starting look at what we can forecast. And then on the left are just the drainage areas draining to each of those projects and they're mapped on a map. So we take the tripod, we have like 22.2 acres, which, which worked out to about 15% of the impermeable area that drains to those projects is managed by green infrastructure. And then we have the milestones, which are the combination of all these different project categories, and then set at 2020, 2030, and 2040. So we can see that just relative to the new development, the green, the public side is about two-thirds the amount of future new redevelopment by 2040. So we felt that this was a, a goal that we could achieve, but also to inspire progress and advocacy, to continue to strive to include green infrastructure. It sort of sets a backdrop or context at which we work. We wanted the milestones to be simple enough to put into the GI Plan and then really focus more on implementation, because that's, we don't want to, we could have gotten through a more complicated study of maybe pollutants of concern in Hafn Bay that we were worried about, but that would require additional funding, and we thought it's more important to focus now on implementation. We also developed, we wanted to have a way of tracking projects as they're completed to, to check against our milestones. So we mapped the existing potential projects and those GIX exhibits that I showed you. And then they're also tracked in an internal server database. And then the countywide program has actually developed a tracking tool as well, and that's anticipated to be completed in 2021 or before. And that could be used by staff, and actually, it's web-based, it's a JAS platform, so you can map projects and see what their impact is before you link them or construct them, which, it's going to be a really useful tool. A draft was actually released this month by the county program, so it's exciting. As part of this effort, in March or just before, I think, the April study session, we released a green infrastructure website. And now we have the Green Infrastructure Draft Plan up on the website at this location. And it just provides a description of what green infrastructure is, but then also helps members of the public maybe visit and then see what is green infrastructure in the context of Hafn Bay, and what are some opportunities, what are some examples that we have. And so it, it sort of has that. And then I just wanted to roughly go over our, the way in which we will prioritize projects in the capital program. So the idea is that we start with the CIP, because those are the projects that are most likely, they're going to move forward, they meet other council priorities and goals and other specific city needs, so we know that they're important. And then from there, we can say, well, is GI a beneficial addition to this project, and how does it sink in with those other project benefits? And so on the left, it's, it's, this is a summary of the many factors that we would consider when, when considering to add GI to a project. So that includes like policy or program factors, land use site, physical feasibility, community environmental enhancement, and then also economic factors. So the screening process, it was developed actually from BASMA, which is the Bay Area Stormwater Management Association. And then we just slightly migrated it because that was intended just to use for the annual report. We made it a tool that we can use perpetuity as part of our implementation process. So part one, initial screening, is a simple go or no-go, it has potential or doesn't. Then two is assessing of GI potential, either projects that may have, based on their, their category, might have potential. And then finally, three, preliminary design. So this way, having a simple screening process allows us to focus our resources on those projects which have the greatest GI potential and not spend a lot of time spinning our wheels on projects that may not. I just wanted to touch on the many economic vitality benefits that GI can provide. It's been shown through research, and, and these items are all in the new countywide Green Infrastructure Design Guide with references, but it's led to higher property values, community place being healthier, sustainable communities, the increased potential that people linger on retail, retail streets, and then higher occupancy rates for apartments. And it just in general gives people a sense of place making, and, and it's, they can be both beautiful and functional, as shown in the local examples on the right-hand side. And the city hopes that by, by sort of touting and outreach-ing on the economic vitality benefits, maybe property owners would be inspired to do more, you know, some voluntary GI in addition to maybe what they're required to do as a means of participating in a countywide effort, but also as a means of protecting Hafn Bay, its water bodies and its coast. So the city reviewed both its standard operating procedures and municipal code, because one of the requirements of the GI Plan was to show that you had sufficient legal authority to implement your GI Plan. And so we found that we did through our standard operating procedures, which require GI to be integrated through the Provisions C3 and the Coastal Development Permit, and then also through the, oh, I guess I didn't write it down, the municipal code. Actually, no, it's the next slide after this, sorry. So for the, just touching our development review process, as part of the GI Plan, we developed some flow charts to summarize our process for reviewing projects with the intent of simplifying when projects come in and they need to have a Provision C3 review or stormwater review, to make that as easy for staff as possible so that it can move through and from pre-application all the way to close out or occupancy, and just really streamline the process. And then finally, the municipal code. So there are several sections in the city's existing municipal code which already support the GI Plan. It might not say GI in there, but it says best management practices, not putting pollutants in the storm drain, and all of that is achieved through green infrastructure. And if the city later wanted to strengthen the tie between green infrastructure and municipal code, you could go back and add definitions of GI entities provisions or changes to those provisions, or tighten up the standard operating procedures. So those are the opportunities. We consider this to be a living process and a living document. We will adapt as needed to fit the changing conditions or even the changing permit. So it did mention how in the MRP, there's no specific pollutant loads or reductions for Hafn Bay. At some point in the future, we don't ever know, but it might, that might change. It might have some kind of pollutant, like fecal pollen in the ocean, which is of concern. And then that could be adjusted by GI. So really, this is an investment in the city for the future to protect water quality and to give back to the community. So from that perspective, it's, it's exciting and, yeah. The next thing is, I just, quick run-through of some potential projects we identified through this, and we review them a little bit ahead of time, but there's various opportunities that we can explore for green infrastructure, and we'll look to these. But also, every year or every two years this CIP is updated, we'll continue to screen opportunities. And part of this is seeing examples. Once you have examples in your city, it becomes easier and easier to implement. So finding the different examples like we have here, a complete streets project or the potlot, having those different examples can help to add to our ability to implement green infrastructure. So next steps, we'll bring this back to council, the final Green Infrastructure Plan, because it's a draft, September 17th, and then shortly thereafter, submit to the Water Board on September 30th. So I say submit, but it's actually, they said a link is signed, because it's a big, it's like 150-page document. So, yeah, so they, we're going to, we already have a link on the webpage, we're just going to update, and then include the link in our annual report for the, for the Water Board to see. And then we will focus, and we already have started on implementing the GI Plan, but continuing to implement those policies and encourage GI in private developments and public projects. So with that, I'll just open it to questions.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. There are, I, I realize that your comments in the beginning stated specifically that Hafn Bay was a little bit, and the coast side was a little bit different than the, the stormwater situations in the cities that ring San Francisco Bay, and I couldn't agree more. As I see it, there are three major stormwater inputs on the coast side. There's the urban infrastructure we have, there's the rural farming infrastructure that we have, and also what could be classified as the natural and unbuilt-on inputs. And I, the one thing I didn't hear was erosion management. And stormwater, as I see it, is a major cause of what we see on the bluff tops and, and the ditches and everything. So I would, I would suggest that as this develops further, you address the specific problem that the coast side faces with stormwater management, which is erosion as well. And I know MAS is working on coming up with a solution for the bluff tops. But it, it seems to me that this problem is a little more unique and separates us from what goes on in the, in the other communities that, that are attuned to this kind of thing. So that's, that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy.
Really nicely done. I think it's a great document. I, I think the presentation was wonderful, and I think you, you summarized the issues like really well. I want to take it even to a more layperson level, and that is, so we're, we're changing the way we do development, and we're, we're, we've done a lot of damage to the environment by not taking into consideration natural processing. And so this whole green infrastructure movement is, is going back to an ecosystem approach, that everything's connected, that the development we do impacts our water, the open space that we have has plants, and plants filter water and make clean water. So we're basically changing the way we do development. We're retrofitting the environment, and we're not restoring natural processes, we're, we're engineering in a different way that mimics natural processes. But the whole point of it is to, is to sort of, you know, go back to, to nature, if you will, and I, I think it's great. The projects, though, because they're like an ecosystem approach, they're, they're more comprehensive and holistic. They provide multiple benefits, they have multiple pieces. Funding them is going to be more difficult, because you're going to have multiple funding sources, these projects are going to take longer. But when they do happen, they're going to transform our community. It's going to be greener, it's going to be healthier, it's going to be better for the environment, you know, all around. And so there's a legislative bill right now called AB 65 that, I think the biggest thing it does is it changes the state's definition of natural infrastructure. Green infrastructure, natural infrastructure, they, they kind of, you know, apply the same thing, basically. But this bill is changing the definition in all of the California codes, and it's going to affect how we provide grants and finance green infrastructure as well. So it's a little more flexible than it used to be. So it's a little more flexible than it used to be, but it's also a little more, you know, nature-oriented than it was. And I just want to read it, because I think it's, kind of gives you a handle on where we're headed. So it says, "For purposes of this clause, natural infrastructure means using natural ecological systems or processes to reduce vulnerability to climate change-related hazards or other related climate change effects while increasing the long-term adaptive capacity of coastal and inland areas by perpetuating or restoring ecosystem services. This includes, but is not limited to, the conservation, preservation, or sustainable management of any form of aquatic or terrestrial vegetated open space, such as beaches, dunes, tidal marshes, reefs, seagrass, parks, rain gardens, and urban tree canopies. It also includes systems and practices that use or mimic natural processes, such as permeable pavements, bioswales, and other engineered systems, such as levees that are combined with restored natural systems to provide clean water, conserve ecosystem values and functions, and provide a wide array of benefits to people and wildlife." So that's kind of a mouthful, but it's kind of like a manifesto too.
Yeah.
How we're changing.
That's a great definition.
Yeah, you know, it's really, it's really comprehensive. Kudos to the committee staff who did it though. So I think that's really thrilling. But the good thing about this document, it's comprehensive, but it's also general and flexible, and like you said, it's a living document. So based on our experience with individual projects, we're going to sort of adapt, you know, what we do and learn from that and share that information with others. So the other great thing is, it's also a learning process and getting us to rethink, you know, how we live and work and play at Hafn Bay and other places. So I think it's pretty exciting and I think that it's a job well done. I know you had to sort of look at what the county's been doing and the state and stuff, but I think you've come up with something that is tailored to us. So I think it's great.
Thank you.
Don't have any questions, because I think we did a wonderful job.
And I forgot to mention, if you want to see green infrastructure, the library actually has a lot of green infrastructure systems, by our central area is a green group, and then also nearby, the Creus, which is the intersection of stormwater perfects, which integrate pedestrian improvements with green infrastructure.
It's great. That is a priority at council, so I appreciate you being here and helping us get there, because like you're saying, this is already a great start and I love looking at this stuff out there and the way this is done. Very appreciative, so thank you for that. But it is the future, it's what we got to move to. So thank you, we're all in here, so.
You know.
Thank you, well done.
Do you want to do anything with it?
Not right now, it's just a study session and we'll bring it back on September 17.
So I guess the only other question I have would be, is what, do you have recommendations or are you going to be making recommendations on any, any like codes we should be changing or anything we need to do from that standpoint at all at any given point? Or are you just going to kind of present this portion of it and it's studying, you know? Do you understand the question a little bit?
I do. Maz was your USC engineer. With regards to the next council meeting, we would be looking at putting it on consent unless there's some specific items that we want to talk about. As far as the code compliance, we feel that it has the language, the teeth in it to implement what we need. Now, it doesn't mean that we can't, through the process of cleaning up the municipal code, there are other sections of it that, for other reasons, that we may want to look into at some point in the future. And at that time, we can look at the opportunity of incorporating the terminology into it as well.
Well, I guess where I've come from, if I could give direction, at least at this point, would be, I think generally speaking, councils is favorable, we have to talk about it, but to go as far as we can down this line. So if we're going to start going through it a little bit, let's get as far into it as we possibly can at the start, as opposed to just, ah, a little bit at a time and then a little bit next, like let's progress a little more.
I think we're doing that.
Yeah. Okay, good, yeah.
Thank you all, it's very informative and as you've heard, we absolutely are going to go green, so this is, this is good. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is commission or committee updates.
So I just wanted to briefly update everybody on the new San Mateo County flood, I can't seem to remember the name right, flooding and sea level rise resiliency district. So this, this district, it's actually right now bored and waiting, because it's being created by legislation that's not been signed by the governor yet. That's AB 825 by Assembly Speaker Mullin. The bill is in appropriations suspense and it's going along nicely, so probably, you know, that's the way the governor's desk will be signed, I'm guessing. So beginning of January 1, then it'll be actually a real district, but in the meantime, there's a lot of work to be done to sort of set up this district. And I am one of seven members of that district. There's two supervisors and five city council members. All women. Did I get that in there? And so to date, we've had two meetings and we've, we're putting out a request for qualifications for an executive officer to be head of the new agency. And we're going to begin interviewing in the autumn and hopefully have somebody ready to go on Jan 1. And then we're also putting together a request for qualifications for what we're calling the investment strategy or the investment plan. It's actually more like a capital improvements plan that's going to focus on sort of seven or eight areas, both bay and coast, that will fit into the sort of what we're calling, they're like land units based on shared shoreline characteristics. It's kind of complicated, it's been, it's been developed by the San Francisco Estuary Institute, that's called the Adaptation Atlas. And it maps out these, these areas, those sort of discrete land use units that can be, if you will, have projects applied to them to prevent flooding, to adapt to sea level rise, whatever it is. So these seven projects or project areas will be matched to these sort of land designations. And then memorandum of understanding will be developed with cities or nonprofit organizations to manage these projects. And we're in the process of developing funding options to pay for them. But it's basically a countywide plan to prepare for sea level rise, future precipitation changes, coastal erosion, that sort of thing.
Is one of the land units here on the coast?
Well, this, this unit process only applies to the bay shoreline, but there's an organization that has started developing a similar thing for the coast. So we will have one, two, and potentially three on the coast that are compliant with this special sort of plan. And I'll be telling you more about these, the ways that they're planning this, but it's a lot of science, but it's going to translate ultimately into public infrastructure. It's going to be more protected. And we're using an existing flood district and we're expanding that to cover the whole kind of area. And it's quite exciting, it's new, it's being watched very closely by people in the state and other places in the Bay Area. This, this notion of taking a flood district and transforming it into something much more, something to address climate threats. We're hoping to attract, you know, a lot of funding for it, because it's sort of new and we're trying new things. So by January 1, I think we'll be able to tell you that who is our new executive officer. We'll have hopefully hired a consultant to develop this plan. There's going to be huge amounts of public input, so there's going to be traveling shows to find out, you know, what are people concerned about and what would they like to see done? That's going to be a huge piece of this, what is probably a million-dollar project. So there's a lot more to come and it's going to be exciting.
All right, I got a question about the glasses. Are we bringing these glasses home? I like the new glasses.
We reuse them.
Are we reusing them? We could just leave them and they're going to be here for all council meetings now? Awesome.
Yes.
Dishwasher.
That's what I wanted. That's what I wanted. If I took them home, we would go through a lot of glasses.
We got a dishwasher.
Okay. Maybe a human dishwasher.
Oh, okay.
We threw the glasses. The next item is future discussion or possible agenda items. Anybody have anything they want to? Next item is city council reports. I'll be brief, I'm the north coast representative of the League of California Cities Coastal Cities. And the coastal cities met with the coastal commission at their last meeting in San Luis Obispo. We wanted to start more of a dialogue with the coastal commission about three areas, short-term rentals, which came up tonight, sea level rise, which also came up tonight,
Local coastal.
Local coastal program efficiencies, so that cities don't have to keep repeating the same mistakes and the coastal commission will work more proactively with the cities. So it was a good start and we're probably going to be meeting again in a month or two with coastal commission staff.
I saw you quoted the paper.
Yeah.
No, San Diego Tribune wasn't.
I think so.
Yeah, I attended, recently attended a coast side emergency response team class on the structure of the ICS, the Incident Command System, and took the online course and passed it and am now certified.
Great.
Yes. But the importance of it is that what's happening here on the coast and what has been happening in the last couple of months is remarkable. Our emergency system group has gotten themselves together, we've gotten sponsorship from Cal Fire here on the coast, and we are getting organized. Our neighborhoods now have representatives, the, there are ham operators and they've been identified in every one of the neighborhoods. There are plans to develop meeting points during a disaster in each neighborhood and have them specified ahead of time, so everybody in that neighborhood knows where to go first and where to go second with that information, and how you get to the hub in that neighborhood and send that information off via ham radio or whatever, so that we can get the help that we need in individual neighborhoods. So kudos to all the people that are really working on it. The city has been tremendously active in it. And we're going to be having something called the rodeo barbecue coming up in September, and I can't remember the date, I think it's the 17th, where people that are CERT trained can get refresher courses and go through each, each of the different parts of the certification process. So, yeah, encourage everybody you know to go get their CERT training and to attend the rodeo.
Thanks for mentioning that.
And I believe September 21st in the morning at the San Mateo Fairgrounds, there's going to be an emergency morning and there'll be all kinds of exhibits, similar to what we had on Kelly a few months ago. So that should be a good event. You'll have to pay for parking, but the rest of the event is free. Anyone else?
The summer zone music concerts later.
That's right, on 21st. This meeting is adjourned.